My name is Keven Largo and I am in fourth grade. I go to school for elementary. I am glad to be accepted into school so I can learn about more stuff and get good grades. So I can be a technology designer or architecture and so I've created thousands of projects. I read a book on engineering, it's a poor idea. Math is my favorite subject in school and I'd like to make some changes to it.
The next student is Amanda Huang. Her parents are Harrison and Altria Huang.
My parents are Harrison and Altria Huang. My grandparents are Harvard Central and Princeton. My grandmother is Altria Huang. My second world I live with the Dallas City University of Harvard through my 20th anniversary course. I was not ready to introduce myself by the time I graduated from Harvard. But I am really excited for the world to keep inspiring and an awesome education. Chris Hosky, our senior in law six year old, has now become a faculty member of the university. My teacher is Ed Delacor, in the March of 2018. I'm very excited and excited to come this time. This time using the opportunity to go into the various fields of science, technology, engineering. This earth's dedicated to new trade, after academic success. I would be introduced to the following subjects and skills in both of technical engineering and communication by Altria Huang. I am very just happy to have my knowledge of communication and communication skills back in the day.
The next student is Taylor Villaman. Her parents are Felicia Yazi and Tyrone Villaman.
Hello, my name is Taylor Brody Villaman. I'm happy to be here and represent my school, my teacher, and my family. When my teacher, Ms. Hosky, nominated me for Pathway System, I was excited and proud. I was excited to travel and to have the opportunity. And I was excited to travel and to have the opportunity to learn amazing things in science, math, technology, and engineering. I was proud because I was nominated by such an incredible teacher who has told me to, told me so much, taught me so much this past year. Pathway System will help me prepare for my future career as a robotics engineer or a chemical engineer. And I will get there by getting good grades and being kind to others. I want to have good grades first so I can get a scholarship to pay for college. I want to be an engineer because I can help the environment and build cool robots. I know that I could make the world a better place by using my knowledge and engineering skills. I am looking forward to this program and cannot wait for the new things that I will learn. I will do my best. I am forever grateful for my teacher, my parents, my school, and my school district.
Our next student is Montana Dawn Daye. Her parents are Jonah Daye and Marissa Francisco. And her grandmother is also a teacher here at the school.
Good evening, school board members, Mrs. Maurer and parents. My name is Montana Dawn Daye. I'm ten years old and I'm in the fourth grade. My teacher's name is Ms. Hosky. My parents are Marissa Francisco and Jonah Daye. My hobbies are sports, music, reading, and I think it would be fun and exciting to attend the National Youth Leadership Forum in Denver, Colorado. I will have an opportunity to explore my future career and life in interest right now. I'm interested in becoming a nurse, thank you.
Thank you so much for recognizing our students. Can I have my students back up here? We're gonna take a picture with the board and Ms. Hosky.
It's good. I think that's pretty much the job of the school district, to make our kids shine. To make sure that they get a good education. We do have good teachers and I appreciate the teachers. I say, thank you so much. And for the record, we have Priscilla Manito and Kevin here, school board members. I want to thank the assistant superintendents for being here too. Thank you for doing a good job. I love Joan, don't thank you for doing a good job helping us. And let's go down to item three, approval of the meeting minutes. Board members, you have time to review the meeting minutes, so what is the pleasure of the board? Okay, motions been made to approve the meeting minutes by Chris Mortensen, roll call Joan. Yes, okay, we approve the meeting minutes of the April 2nd regular meeting. Let's go down to item four, consent agenda items. We do have agenda available there at the entrance for those of you that want to know what we're talking about and what we're doing. Anyway, board members, you had time to also review the consent agenda items, so what is the pleasure of the board? Okay, motions been made by Kevin Mitchell to approve the consent agenda items, roll call Joan. Yes, okay, we approved our consent agenda items. Let's go down to study circle, public comment. Okay, we don't have any public comments, so let's go down to reports.
Mike. Presenting members of the board and members of the community and the community of Turpin Elementary. Before we do our presentation, I just want to let the board know and also community members if you don't know. We had, the board has decided to, for the older schools in the district, to re, not remodel, but to upgrade them with efficiency with the lighting and also with the HVAC systems. If anybody's been at Turpin Elementary in the summertime, it is extremely hot in this building because they only put air conditioning in the hallways. So the board approved approximately $1.7 million to go into upgrade or the installation of air conditioning in the school building for all classrooms so that students and staff are comfortable. And also you notice the lights have already been installed, they're all LED lighting, so that's why they're so bright. I think it's a little brighter here than it used to be from what I remember this summer when the Secretary of Education was here. Which I think I had to walk out that meeting because it was so hot in here, I had to go wipe myself down. So we're excited for Turpin Elementary. It'll be our first school, more to come, making sure that our climate and efficiency of our schools is up to speed in a place that we can be proud of. So at this time, we have several, or at least one presentation, it's gonna go on for several minutes. Usually we don't do presentations this long. But we're really excited as the board has, in their board goals from last year, required. And it's easy because we have the same vision as administration to incorporate relevance, cultural relevance into instruction in our school district. We find that is extremely valuable when students have a connection to the instruction, the things that they're learning in the classroom. They have a better chance of retention, more chance of paying attention. And if you do it directly, and our teachers do a very good job at this, at providing the right text at the right grade level. And so we have recently been using and now I've purchased a product called NewZella. And Gerald Horasik is here standing up and he is Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, a new department that we created this year. And he's gonna go over and explain a little bit about what this software does for teachers. In a way, because we want that material, we want these resources at the fingertips of the teachers as fast as possible. Teachers have a lot, a big job, it takes a lot of time to prepare lessons. And this is a product that allows them to have these texts readily available for them to search and to incorporate in their lesson plans. So I'll turn the time over to Gerald Horasik.
At the district level, we had teachers that used the program, it was a free version. And so it was access to some materials but not the full blown version. So Karen Lott tells me about the Directors of Instruction. She brought this program to me and asked if we'd be interested in doing it district wide and we had a conversation with the superintendent. We went ahead and started using it this spring. And so what it is, is it's an informational text program to where students can access and teachers can access thousands of articles about things that are going on right now in the world or historically, based on informational text. And so the types of stories, it's just an internet platform, it's making access thousands of informational texts, deals with language arts. Those are just some examples of some of the stories you can pull, students share their views on gun laws. And I just want to share one real cool thing about that. So NewZella, they do a lot of pro con articles. And so they had articles of if you were pro Second Amendment or pro gun control. And then the students would read both and ideally, they would make the decision on what they feel is their position rather than someone else trying to sway them towards that position. So that's a pretty powerful piece of the platform. Talks about the polluted rivers, with the millennium tracts where they sued over the polluted rivers. And then how Alkmais Sky City has endured for millennia and won't go electric, stories on that. Just some other examples, more schools are giving into parents' demands about smartphones. There's a basketball story. The latest flash drive trend for teens is likely concerning nicotine. So that's a big article going on now, they look like flash drives for your computer and it's actually nicotine, story about that. And then a first presidential statue of Vincent United Americans to New World. So kids have a lot of access to a lot of different content. It benefits GMCS and our students, it's aligned to our curriculum. It's a computer-based program, it has relevant news articles. And I'm gonna talk about the odd text or differentiated by Lexile level. That's a key piece of the program that really helps our students and our teachers and I'll go into more detail in a different slide about that. After you read an article, you can take a little assessment and it tests the teachers if they understood what they read. So you do an informational text. Teens applied for 20 colleges and got a referral to all of them, they'll read that article, you can take a little assessment on that and it kind of tests your way out with your comprehension level. It's cultural relevant text and text sets for social studies and science. And anytime you understand, board members, go ahead to ask questions. These are just once again some examples of the types of texts that are available celebrating Hispanic heritage. Students make their own voices, are primary sources, better for the German subject during World War II. And once again, the links are simply to show you that it deals with ERA, social studies, pro con articles, science, and mathematics. So it's a wide range of articles that the students have access to, they're updated on a daily basis. So there's new articles always coming into the platform, per converted resources in the US by the company. So here's a really nice piece about the program. If you look on this side where it says "Marrow choices", so you can narrow it by grade level, second, third, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth. Or you can narrow your choices by the actual common core standard that students should be learning during that week or that nine weeks. So you can choose the standard by grade level and they'll produce articles directly tied to that standard. It's pretty powerful. And then the other nice thing is, this is called a Lexile level through the reading comprehension ability, right here. And since this is done on the computer, myself, Mr. Hyatt, and Ms. Hanks get an article and the teacher can assign it to a Lexile. So if Mr. Hyatt has a really high Lexile, has a really good reader and comprehender, he will get the full version of the article. If I'm on the lower end of understanding and I struggle with reading, I will get a shorter, the same article but shorter, fewer numbers of words. But the key thing is, the article I read and he reads, we get the same main points. So when teachers ask us what took place in the article, I who had a low Lexile will be able to pull up the main points just like he could. But it's at our level and the program does that automatically for you. So teachers don't have to spend as much time trying to find something that meets everyone's needs in the classroom. That's probably the most powerful piece about this program, is it meets kids where they're at to have, develop them to become better readers and comprehenders of information. Any questions about that particular piece? For Autism Awareness Month, they had a text set about overcoming obstacles for kids who don't have autism. Once again, just great exposure to students. Okay, so for Galway County Schools for this year, students have looked at, so basically read 24 files of articles. When you pull up a story, you can annotate it so kids can go into the program and they can highlight. Like if the teacher says, "Go find the main idea", they have tools to where they can go highlight or underwrite what the main idea is. And they've done that 940 different times. Number of quizzes taken, so they read an article, they take a quiz, is about 10,000. And then I think the last one was an annotated issue, but it's part of the number of hours they spent reading, it's over a million. And this just breaks down by category, they've read 7,000 science articles, 2,630 arts articles, 1,553 stories dealing with mathematics. So this is just the type of articles teachers are giving to their students, or the type of articles students are accessing. And there's again another text set about the Dakota Access Pipeline protests. So this is what I want to share with you that I feel like we do really well in our department with curriculum. This is really the free version, just a few teachers used it. And then we see the big jump, I'll explain what happened. So we really bought the program from that board in late January, we paid for the pro version for all teachers to use. And so just because we bought the program doesn't mean teachers are gonna use it, correct? So right after this, which was really, because this is actually April, this is March, we had a professional development training at central office. And we brought in Rachel, if anyone wanna think about it, all the English and math teachers.
We brought in one teacher per grade level from elementary school and then English and social studies teachers from secondary.
Secondary, so secondary, English and social studies. But I am sure just because of the number of people coming in, we trained a teacher from that school.
Per grade level.
Per grade level. So you can see the further training and how to use the platform after the training. Significant more use of the program, and reviewed in April, it's already up to 11,807. And that's just about 10 days of April. So what we knew is, by a program, you have to train properly to make sure that it's used well. And the data really shows, we have something right on this piece. So many more teachers are using it effectively and we're actually gonna bring them in this summer, New Zella, in June to train some more. So teachers can understand the program even better. Because one thing, I just want to tell you, one thing Mr. Hyatt tasks us with is, okay, he can buy this program for four months, five months, but the data better show that you're using it and we want to make sure that it is. And you really have to thank the Director of Directors of Instruction, Karen Lee, Rachel, for making sure that it gets implemented. And I don't believe that, is it, yes? Any questions?
Mr. Horasik, who is the one that can log on and is this waiting for the teacher to assign the student or the students can log on and read the article?
So what happens is, students and teachers have an access to log in. Typically, the teacher will assign them the assignment. I don't know if, can students log in back in the server?
So I think at some point they can, but what's really cool is when the teacher assigns libraries by that Lexile level. But on the students, it doesn't show so that we honor all students' reading levels. So nobody has to worry about anybody knowing what Lexile level every student is at. So I know there are libraries that can be assigned and I know that the text, the articles can be assigned. I don't believe students can just browse on their own. I think it's very controlled about what they do and how it happens.
And they access it only in school?
No, it's anywhere at home, right. So I'm in the actual website right now and so we can see the data, I guess, as this is a serious strikes a district place. But they can have discussions on, there's libraries, I'll click on this, so you can taste what I'm gonna have. And so those are the topics, government and economy, science and math, arts and culture. It is, yep. So there's just so many different stories they have access to from different cultures and different backgrounds at all times. And then once again on the left, you can see where it's by grade level or by that standard for that grade level. It's pretty awesome. No, so the teachers were using a free trial and then Karen Lott came away with it. She came to me with the proposal to call it the pro version, because there's so much more you can do. And so Mr. Hyatt said yes to that, as long as we can train adequately and make sure we increase the usage. So there is a cost for the pro version that we're using now. I wanna, somewhere between $43,000 and $45,000. And that's for all schools and all students. And it's housed on their web, so you don't have to worry about where you're at to access the program. Yes, yes. And specifically for ERA and social studies, but we wanted to, science can, I guess, all areas can use it. It's much other to ERA, but all centers can use it, definitely.
So if a, I don't know, a P teacher or basketball coach asks our students to read something on energy drinks, then they could assign?
They could potentially do that, correct? Yes, they could potentially do that, yes. But they may be able to do it right now, I'm sure everyone has access, all teachers do. But they may not be able to do it right now. I'm sure everyone has access. All teachers do. And once again, the last thing about the beauty of it is, you give stories where kids can determine their beliefs and how they feel and not have thoughts in the room trying to sway them. That's just really powerful, because we want students to be able to do the Common Core standards just to probably learn and develop their own opinions. It is fascinating, actually. It's really, just in all my years of doing this, been twenty-seven, probably one of the most powerful tools, because it actually has stories for all kids and especially kids that represent our district, and that's the beauty of that program. And that was one thing, when we met with them, is we said, "You have to PRT us, you can do this and enhance it." And they have done that, so it's really awesome.
Yeah, thank you, Gerald. And I guess the main thing is making sure that the software is being used by teachers and students. And I think it's almost like learning twenty-four seven, getting on the internet and all that. So it's a big advantage for our kids and teachers. So thank you, Gerald. We also have Shaquan, Shaquan Nubusadaria from Gallup Independent with us. So any of the board reports?
One more question, Mr. Perez. So can you break down, who was actually using that program or the? By school, by grade level, can you break that down?
Okay. Claudia, board reports, board members? Kevin?
Just want to report that I did attend the National School Board Conference in San Antonio, April seventh through the ninth. The national conference is always a, always a good experience. You know, we do have different sessions that we go into. A lot, this year I went into mostly a lot of sessions dealing with technology. You know, it's just amazing to see what's out there that I know that we're not using or we may not know of. And then we leave the conference, leave the session and then go into the actual exhibits to where these people are set up and then able to learn more.
We also attended the Native American breakfast that they put on. And it was put on, the guest speaker was a Cherokee, was Cherokee. And she went into the same thing that the Navajo's are, that we're trying to do as far as maintaining our culture, our language. So it was really good to see that this tribe, the Cherokee tribe, what they're doing and how they're going about reaching out to their students and making sure that they're keeping their cultural, their culture alive with their language and all their beliefs. That was a very good breakfast that we sat through as well. I just think that the most important part was, you know, just sitting there and talking with other school board members across the nation and discussing what they do and what we do. I mean, it's amazing how much different it is, each state, each state. The school boards that we talk to, you know, it's so different, it's so different. From election-wise, all the way down to bylaws and laws that they face. But it was a great conference and I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Chef's talk on CIA, I went to the National School Board Association. I took a couple of notes. Yad, air, time, fin, de, shnee, she, a Brazilian, meni, li, ton, chie, do, ha, ton, shlo, a, she, ni, ba, shu, chin, ki, a, ni, da, shu, chie, do, ba, yot, ni, da, shun, na, da, to, tlo, ya, chin, da, ta, shan. Just wanted to say hello. I just introduced myself in my own, with my clan and where I'm from. I'm from Teru, Mexico, and I represent District Three. The conference that Kevin's talking about was very educational for me, because I think within our, the way our children are learning, we need to catch up, because there's so, there's so much involved with technology. And I think that's one thing that our state is going towards and our future is going towards, technology. So it was a new kind of experience for me to get more involved in the technology part. There were different programs that were available. We took, I attended one that had a lot to do with strategic planning, board self-evaluation, superintendent evaluation. And I think just continuing to have and the technology involved would make so much of our work a lot easier and the transparency and also the accountability, I think, is something that was amazing. They talked about board norms, code of ethic, roles and responsibilities, and different ways that we can continue to help our district as board members. Having that involvement with our parents, continuing to be involved in, you know, and also having, you know, not too much on our plate, you know, continuing to keep ourselves in check with our health and our stresses that we have, which of course is a big need for all of us that have multiple hats in our communities. The other thing that I did attend to was, it's called, it was for rural schools and rural districts to where there's a school, individual, I forgot his name, but he developed a program that is now in the cloud, up there, where they have, they do it with our neighbor here of Arizona, where they do have lesson plans and whoever is a part of their group, if there's a lesson, like a fourth grader or a fourth grade teacher that wants to do something on this Common Core section, they can type it in and then it just feeds her all this information of lesson plans, on stories, on recommendations of how, you know, to incorporate that and continue to educate our children. So I really thought that was really amazing. And Kevin and I were talking later on after we attended that. And I said, "It would be really nice if someone would do that." For the indigenous, our Navo, our Native American culture side, if they would develop something where if somebody in Chonto wanted to know about basket weaving, they could put that in there and all this information would come up. And, but maybe somebody out there will be inspired and do something like that. Maybe our own children could do something like that for us. And then the other, the other thing we continued to do, like what Kevin said, we attended the Native American, Native American, Alaskan, Indian breakfast, breakfast. And I think from there, again, with technology, they're using to TV stations, like the PBS television stations to where they really talk. There was a young lady, a young girl, I think she's maybe about nine or eight, that in her own language, she would say the sentence. There would be an elder that would say it in their native tongue. Then the little girl would say it as soon as the elder was done. And then they would, of course, the English was up there too, so they could read both. But I think just having that fluency and hearing it and then also hearing it from an elder, I think that... So they're doing what they can to do what we're doing to continue to revitalize our language and our culture. So that was, those were the three that I think really stood out. The other parts were more health-based related. I went to a couple of mental health breakout sessions to deal with our children. Truancy and behavior was another one. And the biggest one, again, suicide, suicide and ideations. The one thing that I brought back, and I really want, I'm glad that we incorporated it into our agenda too, is that board docs. And I think that would be something that would really benefit our board and also the self-evaluation and re, looking back at our board policy. I think it's something that we also need to do. Thank you.
Thank you for those reports. I do have a small report, that's small. I also went to the National School Board Association Conference in San Antonio, Texas. And the classes that I attended, they were numerous. And it all had to do with improving the work of the school board, how we can do things effectively. And one of the classes that really stands out for me is that I took a class on doing referendums. And although we don't have a referendum issue in our school district, a lot of things that happens in doing a referendum, pretty much, I guess, the way it's done, it deals with how you work with communities. And I think the main thing is providing sufficient information and communication is the key. And I think that's where we need a lot of work communicating. And I brought those back and I'm hoping to start using a lot of these in my work as a school board member. One of the things I've already done is I had, you know, there's fourteen or sixteen chapter governments in my district. And last year I visited all of the chapter meetings, you know, went to their chapters, attended meetings. And then later on, I started taking our superintendent out there, because most of the questions that come up from the community has to do with personnel. And as a board member, I cannot get involved in personnel matters. And I don't want to answer them too, because I don't want to get our superintendent in trouble. So anyway, you know, that's how I've been working. And one of the things that I'm doing right now is I'm asking those chapter governments to set up bottom boards, four by four. And you'd be surprised, it can put a lot of information on there. And what I'm doing with the help of the school district is posting information about the school districts on those, on those bottoms, bottom boards. And I think that's a way to increase communication with chapter governments. And there's a lot of questions that come up. And I've went to all my, the schools in my district, taught with personnel, taught to students in their classes. And that's very good, you know. I think that way you actually know what each school is doing. I want to say that, you know, our schools are doing a good job. I think our staff, the principals, the teachers, and all the support staff, they're doing a good job. Because one of the things that we said as a board is, you know, we're going to make the education of our kids a number one priority. So that when our students graduate from high school, I want them to be competent enough to go directly into a job, if that's what they want to do. And I also want them to be competent enough to go to college without doing any remedial education. And I think that's what's been happening in, you know, after our kids graduate, they go to college, you know, enroll in a college, but a lot of times all they're doing is remedial work. And we have to go past that. So those are things that we are doing. So that's just a little bit of my report, so thank you for being here and everybody here. Let's go down to notice and communications. April twenty-third, we don't have classes, Navajo Nation's a seventy day. And then April twenty-sixth, Region One meeting in Farmington High School. The start's at about five in the afternoon. And then on May second, we will have a regular board meeting. Okay, and then our meeting for May twenty-first is going to be at the board meeting. That's a regular meeting. And then May twenty-fifth is the last day of school. Twenty-eighth, May twenty-eighth is Memorial Day, no school. May twenty-ninth is last day for teachers. And graduation, we have been sharing information about graduations. And you can see that on the agenda. May eleventh, on Friday, is Gallup High School. Graduation at the Angelo DePolly Memorial Stadium. Stadium, I'm glad that they named the stadium after Angelo. He was a good man. Used to call him Angel. I mean, we worked in the past too, so I assume he's an angel now in real life. May the twelfth, we have three graduations. We have Navajo Pine, we have Seigai. Remember Seigai is way out there, way out there, rural area. So if you get a chance, go out there. Seigai and then Crompoint High School. Then the following week, on the eighteenth, Friday, we have Rema High School. And then we have Myra Mira High School. Again, that's at the Angelo DePolly Memorial Stadium. On May nineteenth, we have Central High School. We have Treachy and we have Teru High School. So those are the graduation dates of the schools in our district. You know, take time to go to those graduations. I think you will see the accomplishments, the results that's coming out of the teachings from our teachers in the district. You'll see the work that they have done, how they prepared our kids to face life. You know, living life is not very easy right now. And, but our students are good students. And I know that any problems that comes into their life, they're going to overcome that. That's how confident I am of our kids. So any of that, thank you. With that, let's go to our business, six, eight, one, present law members of the board.
Mike, Mike, excuse me, right before you get started on the graduation, I would like to make a recommendation, if possible. I know that a lot of, the week when I have been attending the graduation, they're mainly just, they just have the high school principals there. And, you know, some of the, some of the teachers, well, most of the teachers usually come out. But I think it'd be nice to send an invitation to the lower grades, the elementary principal and in that area, like for my area, for Teru, or the ones that are there, Crompoint, Navajo, Apache, they're all right there. If they could extend that invitation to the principals and to the teachers of that school, because we know it starts here, like at the elementary level. And their successes didn't just arrive at the high school. It was the nurturing from elementary, mid-school to high school that got those students there. So I think just having the invitation given, given to the lower classes of those teachers and principal, I think that would be a wonderful sign of unity and also a recommend, recognizing the principals and the teachers that were there to help educate those. And also a recommend, or recognizing the principals and the teachers that were there to help educate those graduates.
We can, we can do that, thank you. Present law members of the board, I have Dr. White, Paula White, introduce. The person requesting research on our student population and staff for old business, actually number one, or A.
Okay, thank you, members of the board, Mr. Long, members of the board, Mr. Hyatt, Ms. Nas, my colleagues here and then members of the public, thank you, yeah, for coming. I'd like to introduce Dr. Roberta Marquez, she's from Western New Mexico University. And she'd like to propose a research study so that at the end she can help us retain some of the teachers that we really, really need around this area. So with that, we have Dr. Marquez.
Yeah, hey, buenas tardes. Good evening, board and guests. I am Roberta Marquez, I am a professor of special education at Western New Mexico University. And I am here with you this evening to humbly and respectfully request authorization to conduct a research study. I'll give, start with a very brief statement of the problem. New Mexico is number two in the nation for teacher attrition. That's a very serious problem because what ends up happening is that our students end up being taught by the least experienced and least skilled teachers again and again and again. So to put this in context, think of your first day on the board, your very first meeting. Were you as skilled then as you are now? Definitely not. You've built these skills over a period of time. And the same thing happens with teachers. In order to become a master teacher and a highly skilled, highly qualified teacher, you need to put some time in. You need to be on the job for a number of years. And what we're experiencing, I'm sure you all have seen it in the media, you've seen it on the news, teacher striking, retention is a huge issue at this time in all of our country. But it is particularly acute in rural areas. In rural areas, there is a dynamic known as teacher churn. If you think it's bad in the, in the urban areas, it's twice as bad in rural areas. So teacher churn results in about half, about forty percent of our special ed teachers turning over every year. Sometimes our spec teachers don't even make it through the full year. At Christmas time, they're gone. My study proposes to study an asset-based approach. We're going to ask, how can we keep you? How can we retain you? Instead of, why do you leave? Why do you stay? Most of the literature, the research literature and the data out there in the body of knowledge tells us that things like low pay, heavy caseloads, all contribute to teachers leaving. I want to find out what makes you stay. The chairman, chairperson mentioned a very remote school in Segai. What would keep a spec teacher there for seven, ten more years? What would keep someone in a rural, remote school? And that's what I want to ask. That's the research question, what keeps you? And what can we do to help you stay? Both at the university level, at the training level, the teacher preparation level, and also at the district level. So I'm hoping that my study informs us and gives us the kind of data and information that we need to formulate a plan for how we keep our spec teachers. How we keep those that will serve as the most vulnerable students in our school districts. The methodology that I'm proposing is, it's called a phenomenological study. I didn't say that right, phenomenological study. It's a qualitative study, meaning that I'm gathering data through stories. Teachers will tell me their stories, my role, very minimal. In fact, I'm hoping not to speak at all. I'm hoping to let the teachers tell their stories. Tell me what keeps you. What are the factors that keep you teaching despite low pay? Despite heavy workloads and caseloads, what keeps you here? You tell me your story and I will put it into data format. So I am hoping to get approval for this study because I believe that rural areas are severely underrepresented in the body of literature. Especially since most of the literature involves urban special ed teachers in highly populated areas with schools of a thousand or more students. And that just doesn't represent who we are. We need data and studies that represent us in rural New Mexico. Because almost forty percent of our school districts are in rural areas. It's time we had that data. Thank you so much this evening. Oh, any questions, pardon me? Yes, ma'am?
Um, I have several questions. My first one, how long will your study be?
I'm hoping that I can gather data within three months. I'm hoping not to take longer than... It, it's going to be two meetings with special ed teachers. I won't take any more of their time. It will be two meetings of approximately seventy-five to ninety minutes max. So I don't want to take too much of their already precious time and cut into their heavy schedules. It'll be two meetings almost.
So if you're doing this study on rural, rural areas, all your school listed except for one is in the rural area. Everything else is in or around Gallup. Why not Reema or even the one we mentioned, Segai or Navajo or Tohachy? Why, why are, why are they just all the inner city schools when the rural schools are way out there?
Because by the federal definition, the schools that are on that list are still considered rural because of the population of the Gallup area. The federal definition of rural. And the other reason was that I did not get authorization from my committee to seek a Navajo Nation IRB, the Institutional Review Board. So there was a bit of a, you know, it's part of an administrative issue also. I don't have permission to pursue an IRB. But I do have permission to work with city and county schools that still fall under the federal definition of rural.
Well, I don't, I don't think our, if that's where a public school, you know, I don't think the R, RFP, RIB would be an issue. I mean, I could be wrong, that could be research, but I think one of the things that I really advocate a lot for is I, I, this would be an interesting study for our teachers. And the only other thing that I have a concern on is, you know, with, within our native culture, within our traditional realms and as we native Indian, Native American, is we're always being studied. And I, I think that that's one thing some of our community members might be upset about because people just come and study on us and leave. You know, what is this going to help? I understand how it's going to help retention and maybe show us what's happening. But I think it has to be done in a very sensitive way because a lot of our community members are going to first, that's going to be their first impression. Once they hear, oh, well, they're doing the study, they're going to say, they're going to say, why are we the only ones that people are doing the study on? So I think it needs to be very sensitive in that area because, you know, we don't want to be guinea pigs. We don't want to be anybody's guinea pigs. So I think with that, in that realm, just be sensitive to the needs. And I would really appreciate it if you could check into that because the ruralness is going to be different for you guys to be doing this study here. The ruralness out at Navajo and the ruralness out at Segai is a lot different than the ruralness in Gallup. So even though you find out what the, yeah, we may be rural in the federal laws here as a district, but it gets a lot tougher out there because we still have families without no water, running water, electric. Here, everybody has running water and electric. So that, that's my comment to board members.
May I respond to those comments? Thank you very much. So two things. I won't be studying any Navajo teachers because I don't have the Navajo IRB. So my data will be collected from non-Navajo teachers only. So there won't be under the microscope, Navajo Nation personnel will not be under the microscope for the test subjects, I guess for lack of a better word. These will all be non-Navajo special education teachers. And then the second piece, I could not agree more. I, I will, I vow to have extreme sensitivity and cultural competence for this study. I worked on the Gallup campus for four years with Western. And I have an absolute appreciation and love for the community. And that's why I came back here. Western primarily serves the Deming area and the Gallup area. Those are where the bulk of our special ed students come from in the teacher preparation program. And I chose this community because I feel like my heart is here. And not, it's not that I don't have a deep affection for Deming, but I would rather work with this community and try to bring something that helps to this community.
I just, you know, I absolutely agree with Ms. Manuelito. You know, I don't consider our Gallup schools as rural. I don't think, I don't, I mean, I know we have a problem as far as retention everywhere. But I think our biggest retention area that we need to work on and need data, data from is our actual rural communities, which is our Tohachi, Navajo, Crompoint. You know, those are the schools that we need data from. You know, we can get data from Turpin and Gallup and JFK here in Gallup. But it's, it's not going to tell us anything. It's not going to tell us about our actual real schools that we need to know about. What we need to do to retain our teachers. So I don't know how, I don't know, and this IRB, I don't know what, I mean, if, you know, if you can answer the question as far as if we need that permission.
Thank you for, thank you for your question, Ms. Manuelito and Mr. Mitchell. Navajo Nation's Research Review Board is required when a researcher decides that they want to study on the Navajo reservation or interview or research or talk with Native Americans, Navajos on the reservation. What they have to go through, go through a very lengthy process is to protect our Native American kids and adults as well. So therefore, a lot of people choose not to go through Navajo Nation IRB process because it's very tedious and very lengthy. And, and then a lot of researchers, when they realize that they cannot, we can, they cannot go to the reservation, like at Segai, Navajo and all these other areas, they choose not to do that. So they do, they work with schools off the reservation. So long as they're not interviewing Navajo kids or Navajo teachers or Navajo adults. And that's, that's how Navajo, just Navajo Nation protects their tribal members. With this process, they chose not to go through Navajo Nation IRB process.
With that said, you know, you stating that it's a tedious process and something that they don't want to go through, I really feel that, you know, to get the real information, I mean, it shouldn't be considered tedious. It should be, it should be a process that they want to go through in order to acquire the information we need for our actual rural areas. I don't, so I don't, is there a way that the, like Gallup County, County can go, go through that process for them and ask for the permission to, to do the, to gather the data?
Mr. Mitchell, the researcher themselves to go through Navajo Nation and once they get the approval of Navajo Nation Research Review Board, then they come to the school to say, we want, we have got approval from Navajo Nation. It's that process. We don't go the other way and act on, and say, we want this to happen for us to be, or other things. It's got to be from the researchers, the community as a whole, from the outside. They have to go through the Navajo Nation Board to get approval for it.
Question, thank you, Roberta, Paula, again. What Roberta is doing is there's a need to find out, you know, what would keep a special ed teacher at the schools in our district? There's that need, we need to find out, you know, if there's some that have been there seven years or more. What kept them there? What keeps them there? So that study itself would produce a lot of information. And so what Roberta is doing is she's going through the process within our school district. And the process is she makes the presentation before the board. Now, the Navajo Nation has their own process when it comes to research. They have their own process and, I, let us say, you know, it's a very stringent process. And they ask a lot of questions like, you know, what is the main intent of your research? What are you trying to do? And they make sure that our culture, our language is just being studied just for the sake of studying it. It's to get information. And a lot of times, you know, any research is, that's approved by IRB. We get it when we have our Eastern Navajo Agency Council meeting. I'm a member of the Eastern Navajo Agency Council. And what we do there is that, just what Roberta has done, she explained the need, she explained the instrument that she's going to use. And, and, you know, then when we approve it, she begins her work because we authorized it. And that's the way the council is, Eastern Navajo Agency Council. We approve the work that's going to be done. And a lot of the researchers that come before us, the requests that come before us, they're very good researchers. And I guess the thing that I know that read through the packet is that the study that is made, we're going to get a copy of it. And that will tell us what the findings were in the research. So just to make it something a little simpler and clearer, I guess, thank you.
Well, my concern with that is I don't think it'll be accurate. I really don't think it'll be accurate because now you're saying all you're going to interview is white special ed teachers. But how, I, I think the question I would want to know now is how many, and I, I hate to ask this, but I guess this is a white and non, non-native and native question, is how many? and native question, is how many special ed teachers do we have that are Anglo or non-native and how many are native? Because now all we're going to hear, all we're going to hear-
Hold on one more, uh, hold on. Okay, go ahead.
All we're going to hear about is, or, or the opinions that are going to be in the study now are going to be of white, not, I hate saying that, non-native special needs teachers. That's all we're going to hear about. We're not going to hear about how, why our natives, special ed teachers are staying because it's a cosa they're buried here or their, um, their families here or we're not going to get, that's why they stay is because they're from here, they're invested. All we're going to, we're not going to hear any of that in this study. So I, I, it won't be as accurate as we want it to be to get the real cause of why our retention is down or-
Present law members of the board, Ms. Manuelito, um, I think your criticisms are valid. If you don't mind that we take this to our legal team, uh, to discuss the options that we have and see if there's a way that which we can make it more inclusive of all schools, whether they're located on leased land or whether they are part of the city or county.
Mr. Long, then I would like to make a motion to table this, to consult with our legal, um, attorney before we take any actions, sir.
I think, um, the question of Navajo special ed teachers, the reason why they might be here at this point is I don't think Roberta has gone to the Navajo Nation and she hasn't gone before the IBA, R, IBN or whatever, that, that group. She hasn't gone before that group. That's why they're not included. And, and I think, uh, if she does go before them, I'm sure that they will support it.
So if we're going to point out that one of the reasons that I've gone before Navajo Nation for IRB purposes is because I have no funding. This is a zero percent funded study. I have nothing from my, from my university or from a private foundation. Um, this is my work, my work as a special education teacher preparation, assistant professor. And I would like, for example, this evening, I came here on my dime. I'm going to interview the Indian teachers out of my community. So when my committee reviewed my request, it was also to protect me from, um, you know, putting out so much because a study like this truly is about ten to eighteen thousand dollars and it's going to be fully funded and fully supported. Unfortunately, I, my university just doesn't have that right now, but I did want to try to provide some data, some information that would help inform me as, as a professor. I'm a teacher of teachers, so I was trying to gather some data that would help inform me without bankrupting my, my family.
Okay, thank you. And remember, this is also part of a dissertation that she's doing. So keep that in mind, you know, A, uh, to me, it's not about us Indian versus them, you know? Uh, I think that has no place, uh, in a board meeting, but we do have a table and motion, uh, roll call, John? Motion was made by Priscilla Manuelito to table.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Mortensen?
No.
Mr. Long?
No. I make a motion to approve the research study.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the research study. Uh, roll call, John?
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Manuelito?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, we've, uh, approved your request.
Mr. President, I just want for the record that, um, my vote for no, and if there's any legal repercussions from this, that, um, if there's any kind of sensitivity that is over, but over, um, that is affected by this, I, and I don't think, I, for the record, again, I want to state it that this study will not be accurate due to the interviews of, not, that are not going to be taken by our native special needs children, or not children, sorry.
I think I already explained, you know, that the reason why our spec teachers are not involved in the study is she hasn't gone before the Navajo Nation to seek approval from there. And I think that's pretty, uh, much, uh, resolved or pretty much settled. And any comments after an action has, has been approved is no, okay? So let's go down to our next agenda item.
Mr. President, I just want to say one last thing. Um, I, I hear you. I truly do. This is your second article to read. So I've been through the process and I understand a little bit better than I did the first time. And I, I will put my heart and soul into doing as culturally competent as I possibly can. I, I, I will doubt that to succeed. Thank you, board.
Okay, so thank you for your presentation and let's go down to-
President, I just want, I just want to say that I think Ms. Manuelito stated it needs to be on the record and not no.
I'll take that under advisement. We have our attorney here ending. So let's go with, uh, the next item on our agenda. Um, new business, approval of OneSite programs in partnership with Walking Shields, Inc. to provide free comprehensive eye exam and eyeglasses for Gallup McKinley County Schools students.
Present law members of the board, I would like to introduce John Distio. John, would you mind coming up and giving a quick overview of the service that you provide or that you want to provide our students? I apologize, Dr. Distio.
Thank you, uh, very much, school board, for allowing this opportunity and, uh, our just staff and our audience here. Um, it's been nice to talk.
I'm just going to briefly tell you about Walking Shield and then Dawn here who works with OneSite. We're both nonprofits. Uh, Walking Shield, we've been, uh, incorporated in nineteen eighty-six. We've been providing services and programs in Indian country, uh, since that time. Primarily, we started in northern plains. And since then, uh, now providing services and programs to, uh, forty-eight American Indian reservations across the country. Uh, I'm not here to talk about our services and programs, but, uh, just briefly, uh, we do infrastructure and healthcare, the Department of Defense, um, several reservations. We provide housing, uh, through, uh, excess homes from, uh, all fifty states, all military installations. We provide educational, uh, scholarships, primarily in Los Angeles area. Uh, we provide the manager and aid and toys for kids on holidays. Here in the Navajo Nation, our treasurer board is the, uh, secretary for the Native American Toys for Tots Program. We provide, uh, the toys here for the Navajo Nation primarily through the police departments. Uh, so I'm here to talk about one, one program that we offer and I'm letting Dawn share a little bit more details. Uh, about three years ago, we provided this program at Kiente and we provided, uh, about thousand plus, uh, comprehend, free comprehensive eye exams. And, uh, the adults and students are able to pick whatever frames they want. There's twenty to thirty different types of frames. They're all brand new frames. You know, the UROX, I was in the UROX, they're not those medical ones, are they? I was talking to UROX last week. But these are all nice, brand new frames. It's a big selection. We want the students to wear their glasses. Uh, um, the typical need rate, like Kiente, for instance, uh, seventy-one percent of the students that we saw needed glasses and about ninety-nine percent of the adults needed glasses that we saw. Again, they're able to pick out the glasses. We make those glasses on-site. So ninety-nine point nine percent of the students will probably have their glasses before we leave. And about, uh, probably about eighty-nine percent, maybe the adults will have their glasses before we leave. Uh, the host, uh, school is Sayai Bonaventure. Uh, the program starts November fifth through the ninth. Uh, we want to help approximately seven hundred students, invite whatever students you want, uh, whatever schools you want, uh, to this program. Uh, we work with Tracy Lee at Bonaventure, who's offered her schools, our school gym and some of their other facilities over there. She messaged through Rose since they were pretty close neighbors. That's, uh, I had him contact in Mr. Hyatt's office and, and work with Paula a little bit on, share a little bit more about Walking Shield, about the OneSite program and what we do. Again, it's, it's free, comprehensive, full eye exams. And it's free, brand new pairs of glasses. There's no charge, right? There's no fees. So I'll let, let Paula share a little bit about OneSite.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. My name's Dawn Nager. I'm a program manager for OneSite. OneSite is a nonprofit that is celebrating its thirtieth year this year. And what we do is we provide comprehensive eye exams and glasses prescribed to communities within the United States and around the world. Um, myself, this year, I will lead eight different clinics, four outside of the US and the remainder here in the US and have the opportunity to, to come here to New Mexico in November. Um, so as John said, we will look to see seven hundred students out of the districts locally here and also would like to see about three hundred adults as well. What we do is we bring in a team of volunteers that are trained staff. They are optometrists, opticians, they are lab technicians, they are doctors technicians. They are every single person that you would encounter through the process of an eye exam, all the way through to receiving the glasses on your face. OneSite pays for their transportation, their hotel, their food and everything while they're here on the ground. And those folks come from around the world through our supported partner, which is Luxotica. You guys, if you don't know who Luxotica is, just for a point of reference, they are, they own Lens Crafters, Sunglass Hut, Oakley, Pearl Vision, Ray-Ban, all of those names. And that's why the glasses that our patients receive are, as John said, are, are top-notch. They're the most beautiful made in the world and we're offering that to the students and some of the adults at no charge. So that's a little bit about what we do. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Board members, for a moment, but, um, I forgot, when you say adults, is that just like, um, for teachers or parents or who, who, who as an adult can receive a service?
Yeah, right now, we're, uh, working with Tracy Lee, but we'd be working with whoever your point of contact here to identify whatever adults you want to invite. Um, we typically see, uh, when the students come with their chaperones and teachers, we typically see those folks as well. Uh, even the bus driver, probably won't dilate his eyes, who knows, but, uh, see the bus driver, too. We had one bus driver, he needed glasses at one of the reservations that we're at. So we're happy that we saw him, you know, to dilate the kids, right? So, uh, yeah, we'd be working with whoever your point of contact to identify adults, uh, whether it be, uh, you want to choose elderly or their teachers or staff or people in the community. That's all up to you. So we would work in collaboration with Tracy Lee and your point of contact at Mr. Hyatt's office and to decide, uh, what adults, we see the adults on Monday, so we can start making their glasses right away. You know, I had, uh, Hoopa, I'll tell you a quick story, right? At Hoopa, uh, we probably had some glasses, so adult came out on Monday, right? And on Wednesday, we gave him glasses, right? And, uh, he goes to me on Friday, hey, Tom. I go, what? He goes, I haven't been able to sleep for two days. I go, oh, man, I'm sorry about that. He goes, no, no, you guys gave me glasses. I can finally see and I read two books already. So I mean, uh, your vision, those who wear glasses, their context can understand. It's such a gift. And, uh, we believe that, uh, give the students a Friday chance in school, be able to read that book or see that, uh, white board, like, like, like Davis Blackboard, right, but white board, right? Uh, uh, so, uh, the adults, you know, when they need glasses, you know? Anyways, uh, it's all up to you. You decide. Please.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Is it open to any kids or adults?
It's open to whoever you want to invite.
Anybody who wants to come.
It's whoever you want to invite, yes. And we work with whoever.
We do ask that we keep to a schedule so that we don't wind up with on Tuesday at ten o'clock with three hundred people in the clinic that we can't service, right? So what we do is we work with local, um, organization and create a schedule so that there is a definite path to that, right? We'll see a certain number of patients per day.
Yeah, I, I've done twenty-five clinics over, over twenty years. So I will work with all the details for you. What time, uh, Skechelene starts, what schools are being further away than other ones. I work all the details, whoever your point of contact is. I did that with Kiente to help them out. I know how busy sometimes the, uh, superintendents or principals or school nurse might be. We keep everybody in the loop so that everybody knows what's going on. So I will work those details with you. And, uh, like Dawn said, we want to make sure that we have a steady flow and that we see everybody that's scheduled for that day.
Mr. President, I'll go ahead. Motion to approve, please.
Motion is made by Priscilla, uh, to approve the partnership, uh, between the Gallup McKinley County School and, uh, OneSite Program to do free glasses and eyes and roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, uh, seven B, board self-evaluation. Uh, I put this on the agenda because I think it's important. You know, as a school board, uh, we set standards for principals, for teachers, and mainly the superintendent, he does all the rest. On the other way, you know, but we set, uh, standards for him. And, uh, we want everything that he does to be transparent. We want him to be accountable. But as a board, we don't have anything in place. And I think as a board, we need to be transparent. We need to be accountable. So this is the reason why I think, uh, as a board member, uh, you hold any elected position, you hold a special position. And in those positions, the people you vote, that voted for you, you have to be accountable to them. You have to be transparent to them. Not only in what you say, but what you do. Not just only at the board meeting or at some meeting, just doing it just for show, but you need to do it in a way that's on- But you need to do it in a way that's out of conviction. The way you talk, even the way you dress. Uh, you know, you're a very important official. And you have to look that part. And you have to walk that part. So that's why this is on the agenda. I'll have Mike explain a little bit more.
Um, I'm actually gonna jump the time over to Ms. Manuelito. She had some information that she received from the conference in San Antonio. And so if I'm gonna pass the microphone down there for...
Thank you very much. I think, um, one of the things that we need to do, um, as board members, um, is what, some of the things that our board president did state. Um, I think a lot of the, uh, if we're gonna be holding ourselves accountable for our actions and the plans that we make for a district, I think we need to also review ourselves as a board. Um, and in, in having that mind frame and working together, you know, how can we continue to grow, um, with our board goals, our ethics, and the challenges that might arise and, you know, different things that we see? We need to evaluate ourselves, not only, um, to see what's working and not working, but also continue to, um, make plans for the upcoming futures of ourselves. Because I think if we want to be accountable, or if we expect our superintendent and our teachers and our staff and our, even our students to have that accountability, we have to also do that for ourselves as professionals, um, assisting our superintendent. So I think with this board evaluation, we will see where we need work. We're gonna see where that, where our challenges are, um, as board members and start making our own corrective actions within ourselves. And I think that will show a lot, um, to our, to our constituents especially, to see what suggestions other board members may have and how we work together to resolve those issues. And I think a lot of it, um, we, we do, we do do a lot of that already. But I think to have it documented and then also to open those doors of communication among ourselves. Um, we did have one, um, it wasn't really a board evaluation, but it was more of how to set goals and board goals and, um, for, for ourselves. And I think that's where the discussion starts from. And I think just having those clarifications and this training that I attended at the, um, the National School Board Association, those were some of the comments that other board members nationwide that are doing, uh, have really started to, um, identify with other board members within their, within their, um, schools. So I think this is something that I would love to do. And then later on, um, maybe even incorporating other school districts and seeing what their, how their board evaluations are going. Or either help each other, um, with that process. Thank you.
Ms. Manuelito, I just have a, a quick question, I think, um, on, on these board evaluations. What type of accountability or whatever would be attached to these board evaluations, or if, if any?
And, and that's the great part about this is that would be all up to us. You know how we set the superintendent evaluation? We, we did our board goals, we did our legislative priorities. Um, of course, like I said, our, our different, um, um, policy and procedures. We started to develop that ourselves. And we, we, we are the ones that will kind of select, we can use templates from other school districts or in, in the state of New Mexico. Um, we can maybe even ask our legal team or, you know, any, any recommendation they would have to help us with that process.
I think, Mr. President, I mean, I, I think it makes a ton of sense, um, to at least look at this and study it, see if it, you know, what kind of templates or information is out there and what exactly, you know, what direction we want to go. And, and, you know, once we look at that, I guess it makes sense to see what kind of accountability there is or, or whatever from there. It's important for us to remember that we're, uh, you know, politically elected officials and we have constituencies. And, and each of our constituencies is a little bit different. And, and, you know, we have, I guess, a dual role. We have a responsibility to our constituencies and a responsibility to the children in the, in the school district. And so, I mean, as long as we're able to take all those factors into account and, you know, and look at it, I think to me, it, it makes sense to, to see if we can build that into some kind of, uh, you know, evaluation and, and see where it takes us.
Ken, thank you. I think, uh, in this process, you know, this is pretty much just to get an idea as to what the, uh, board members are thinking of this. And I think the next step is that we make a consultant to help us, uh, build a program for it so it could be done at the next meeting or the next meeting or whatever. But anyway, this is just sort of the beginning. And, and I think it's really important that we, as a board, not only, uh, be accountable, but we be transparent in our, in our dealings and, and all that. So thank you for your comments, Ken.
Mr. President, I just want to say that I think it, it, it'd be a great help for the board itself as far as knowing what, um, these board members are actually thinking. I mean, we, we're all up here and I think that we all need to be on the same page. Right now, I mean, we don't, I mean, we don't know what the others are thinking or what, what we want. My goals and my, what I want to see in the future, I don't know what you guys want. And I think this would be a great way to put everything together and make sure that we're all on the same page and wanting the same thing for our district. So I think it's a great idea.
Gosh, Ken. Now, the next two action items requires us to go into executive session. I want to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I would like to make a motion that we move to executive session.
Okay, motion's been made for us to go into executive session. A roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Yes. Seven forty-four. Board members, uh, you know, motion to come out of executive session?
Motion. Motion to come out of executive.
Okay, motion's been made by, is it Michael or Kevin?
Kevin.
Kevin, gosh. Roll call, Mike?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members.
How about time?
At ten oh three.
Ten oh two.
Okay, um, we went into executive session to talk about the middle college charter school. Uh, we discussed, uh, the concerns, the issues surrounding that. But no action was taken on that. And then we went into the evaluation of our superintendent. And, uh, the board reached consensus to give him a rating of satisfactory and, um, probably approve his, uh, evaluation. But that's the highest level of satisfactory, so, uh, we believe he's doing a good job. Board members?
Mr. Hyatt, I just want to say thank you, um, for completing a very, very informative binder that shows us, um, as, um, board members of the district, uh, the direction our, our district is going. It's going in a positive direction. And with that transparency and the communication, I think, uh, we were consensus with that, that...
Move forward and more in the, in the future. I'm excited to see what you can do in the future.
I appreciate, uh, coming from me, from me to Mike, thank you. Doing a, a good job. And, uh, we, you've been working with the board in a professional manner. We do have a lot of respect for you. And we know that our district is gonna continue to move forward and do what's best for all the kids. So thank you, Mike.
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, table action item seven C?
C.
Seven C, uh, approval of settlement with charter school on appeal to PED or revocation or alteration of charter school contract.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd also like to, uh, put forth an action that we approve the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay.
And congratulate him on a great first year.
Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Board members, I believe we've concluded our business.
Go for it.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion's been made for adjournment. Roll call, Mike?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Time, Mike. We are adjourned.
Ten oh seven.
Ten oh seven. And I can...